The Royal Family now.
Yeah.
We're live. You're not live. Okay, so with that, thanks for being here tonight. We are officially, we are officially live. And I'd like to start by doing a roll call to establish a forum. Starting with Joe.
Here.
Corby.
Here.
Jen.
Here.
Nicole.
Here.
John.
Here.
Juan Carlos.
I'm here as well.
We officially have a forum. Paul, has it been properly noticed?
It has.
And Jen, could you read our equity framework and land acknowledgement?
Yes, our educational equity framework reads, "In the Verona area school district, our mission is that each student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a diverse global society, and lead a healthy, self fulfilling life. To meet this mission, the Verona area school district will ensure that every individual has access to the educational, social, and emotional support they need to feel valued and affirmed in their unique identities and experiences. We acknowledge that inequities and power dynamics exist in our system such that some individuals on the basis of their identities face barriers to accessing the opportunities they need to experience success. In acknowledgement of such, the Verona area school district is committed to disrupting these systems of inequity. In our land acknowledgement, there are currently 12 tribal nations who call Wisconsin home, with the Ho'ochunk Nation being the primary group living around Madison. No matter where you are in the state, you are on the ancestral land of a tribal nation. As we begin our day, we honor the land upon which we stand." For our meeting in this case.
Thank you so much. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at tonight's agenda? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Some.
A motion from Jen, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Nicole. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. With that, we will turn it over to the superintendent for his report. But before we do so, I want to acknowledge that Dr. Clarity has been recognized by the University of Wisconsin at Whitewater and received the distinguished alumni award for professional achievement. So.
The Warhawks.
Yep.
Yes. So, well done.
Thank you.
So now we'll turn it over to you.
It is my honor to bring both Adam and Amy to open the presentations for the superintendent's report. So, we are really excited today to be able to, while we mostly present, this is going to be an opportunity for some real, I think, intentional and purposeful engagement, or we're having dialogue at the table. And it'll really help us in our future thinking as we bring and prioritize more of the indicators that we were going to bring before the Board of Education. We felt like today was appropriate. Instead of doing our kind of a normal presentation of indicators to really, we'll have our community here, let's talk about how we are thinking about reforming leading of our indicators, and they have a great board discussion to make sure that we are all aligned. From everything from when we say words like benchmark, are we all saying the exact same thing?
Mm-hmm.
When we say things like core, are we saying the exact same thing? Really having some deep dialogue about, and understanding, you know, what does proficiency mean for Verona area school district? What does it mean for, we talk about it as a national norm. Those are millions of students and millions of numbers that are going into play. And so, we really are, it's going to feel different because it was designed differently, whereas its presentation designed to stimulate great conversation. And that's what we're looking forward to today. As I agree, we're turning it over. What I want to ground us in are three areas and the three significant leadership moves. Really, I feel like we've taken Verona area school district to that next level of rigorous and intentional instruction. And that first is the setting around our professional learning communities in the form of collaboration and a distinctive investment for our community that gave us the opportunity of time for our staff to do that great professional learning together. We also know that we have been focused intentionally on disciplinary literacy across content, knowing that literacy is freedom. And we know that aligns to our mission and our beliefs. And then finally, this year is kind of that third step. It was that commitment and the intentionality of putting, making sure that there is grade level and above instruction in front of every single student in the Verona area school district. And that means not just the instructional component of it, but the resources that are supported, that are supported as well. And so, when you, when you think about those three leadership moves and, you know, having those come to fruition, now are we measuring in a way, or providing evidence to our board in the form of indicators that proves that those leadership moves are correct? And that's the purpose of our conversation for today. Okay? So with that, I'm turning it over to Amy and Adam. Thank you so much for joining us, and we look forward to a great conversation.
Awesome. Thank you for welcoming us here today to continue this conversation about results policy indicators. We know that we're one of the people presenting, and we see some of the gaps in the indicators we're presenting, so excited for the conversation tonight to really make sure that the indicators and the data that we're using really is meeting the intentionality of the results policies as they were, as they were written. So our parents say we're reviewing our results policies to ensure we have that really tight alignment. And just to name a bit of our sandbox tonight, we know that for our indicators for our results policies, we have many different metrics. STAR, climate survey, office discipline referrals, student enrollment numbers. Tonight, we're really digging into, the book has been our STAR results, right, around many of our core kinds of areas, specifically reading and math. And we know that there's some other areas that we'll also be coming back to, to discuss. But for our conversation tonight, we really wanted to hone in on how we're using those specific databases. And the way we'll go about this then is we're going to actually give three buckets or three ideas of metrics. The first will be proficiency, and then we'll pause and have some discussion. How does that sound? What's your feedback? Then we'll talk about rule, and do the same, pause, and then what we're calling the VASD mission metric, which we're excited about, but we'll pause at that point for your feedback along the way. So we're going to kind of take it in three chunks so that we can have some open dialogue and feedback about the ideas that we're proposing in here, how do you see alignment? Or where we can rethink some of the ideas that we're set for. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Adam, who's our assessment coordinator, to walk us through proficiency metrics.
So to echo Amy and Dr. Clarity, we're just presenting any of this right now. You get to kind of, for the benefit of weeks and weeks and weeks of deeply digging into these things, and look forward to answering some of your questions and explaining how we got to where we are. So to start, and I really want to uplift the idea of benchmark here. When we're talking about a benchmark, we're talking about the comparison of an organization or an individual and their performance against some norm. We are not living in those norms today. That would be the work to come. What do we want those norms to be? Because we have the opportunity to, things that we have available to us and set a norm for our districts, which in turn can be, kind of for the conversations you've had over the last couple of years in living in these policies, what might be a threshold that we want to set for ourselves that we will meet or not meet that will conform adherence to that policy? And that could include, and you'll see today, comparison against another comparable organization, comparison against ourselves in previous results or some desire to go out on for ourselves. So we also want to live, and we live deeply in this this year, the idea of proficiency. We use this term a lot in education, and sometimes we misuse this term a lot in education. And when we talk about proficiency, what we're really talking about is, does that reflect where we want students to be by the time they leave our system? So proficiency is not just an academic thing. You can be proficient in a whole sort of things. In terms of our conversation today, we're really talking about proficiency in academics. Do students have the skillset, they learn the grade level standards, to open all the doors that could be available to them by the time they leave our system? Whether, whatever door they choose to walk, or have we prepared them for that? And when we're looking at something like the Wisconsin Forward exam, which is the exam that our state uses to measure how students have progressed towards knowledge around grade level standards, we're going to be living in two representations of percentages, and it's important to understand both. The first is going to be what a student's percentile rank is on the forward assessment. Be it the 50th percentile, the 63rd percentile. And the Wisconsin Forward assessment sets what those benchmarks are. When you meet it, you are considered proficient. When you meet this, you're considered advanced. In terms of our onboard policy, what we're kind of living in is the idea of how, what percentage of our students have met that benchmark. So, we're living in those two different representations of percentages, and that varies across subject area, that varies across grade level, what it would take to meet that. And we're the beneficiary of a lot of quantitative research that our state has done to set what those are and what it would mean to be proficient. So, when we think then about, kind of risk is the other thing. And this is really where STAR comes into play. With the STAR assessment, at its heart is meant to be, is a 20 question assessment adaptive to how students are doing on that, that when you walk away from that, it's going to tell you how at risk a student is to kind of be predictive of whether they can meet grade level standards in other work that they're doing. And so, how we're using it, and what STAR was intended to be used for is, when we look at that, where students are making decisions about who we might need to intervene around. This is a student that is at risk for not meeting grade level standards, and we know that compounds as students move through our system. And so, wanting to make sure we're providing the supports that students need in whatever subject it is, whether it's reading in English, reading in Spanish, or math, to be able to make those decisions. There is no perfect measure, but when we look back at how we use STAR, how it is used is the perfect part. The word of a teacher is every single day in class, they've taught something to grade level standard. These are the students that I have evidence that they learned this standard. These are the students I don't think have quite learned it yet. Now, what am I going to do about it? STAR can be a really helpful thing to do that. And the fact that it is a benchmark and an interim assessment, we can take it over multiple sittings over the course of the year, fall, winter, spring, see how students are progressing. And when we think then about, in a kind of a healthy school system, you see that bolded sentence at the bottom, name any metric, whether it's behavior data or academic data, in a healthy school system, 70 to 80% of students would be identified as having low risk. That means that our core systems, the instruction we're providing every single day in class, the support we're providing for all students is meeting their needs. Once we see that number kind of ticking down, or actually the students who are at risk increasing, that means that the instructional program we're providing is not meeting their needs. We need to change that. We're not seeing that in our system right now. And so, it would be the, kind of that 30 to 40%, or sorry, the 20 to 30% of students at risk, those are the students that might be, when we talk about a tier two intervention, that would be support that some students would get. And then a tier three intervention would be very individualized support that a student would get. And when I say individualized, I do not mean an IEP. An IEP is not an intervention. But the support that they would get to be able to better access construction.
Adam, do you want to interject with a question? Don't wait until you're done with the first question.
Why don't you wait till we get to the proficiency part, and then we'll move back around? So, in our current reporting system, we have been reporting around students who are at risk on the STAR assessments. We know that at risk, or sorry, not at risk does not also, is not synonymous with proficiency. Where we've been living in a lot of our board conversations. And currently, when we report students, you need to meet the 40th percentile to not be considered at risk. To be proficient would actually be more around the 60th percentile. And so, it's led us to the conversation that we're going to have today, that previous results policies really, if you look at this graph, is including kind of all of the students you see under that arrow. And want to make sure that, and this is where we get to the family communication piece, is we're communicating to families how students are doing on STAR, are talking through some of these things, but we feel it's really important that we're reporting to the board. You're not making not at risk synonymous with proficient. We need to tease those two things apart. So in looking through this, you know, we looked at some of the correlative research that exists between STAR reading English, STAR math as a predictor of future success in the forward exam, and even more future success on things like pre-ACT and ACT, knowing that those are really robust measures that look at critical standards. Currently, we are using STAR scores to look at how students are progressing, who might need more support, those adjustments to instruction, those data audits that our teachers do and are so amazing at. Hoping and believing that that is a future predictor of success on some of the more high stakes measures and assessments that our students take, and that that is really a early warning system that helps us do the things we need to, to close knowledge gaps, close opportunity gaps, to make it more likely that our students are going to succeed and achieve and be proficient when we do those future assessments. So as we lived in this, we looked at some different ways, we did some different assessments of how we could correlate the work that's already working in the classroom, the things that our teachers are already using, that our students are already doing in a way that we can come to an idea for a board metric that does not break the things that are working in our schools. And what we realized is we looked at, gosh, if STAR is correlated to Wisconsin Forward, let's do some math and figure out how that could be. Gosh, there are some problematic things there. If it's a risk assessment, not a proficiency assessment, we would be kind of doing our own math to figure that out, and that made us a little bit nervous. Could some other assessments do that? We looked at things like math. We looked at Fastbridge. Can all of these things bring us to the same conclusion? All of them are directly related. To get to a proficiency measure, we would have to do the math to correlate it to Wisconsin Forward. And we realized that every single thing is tied to grade level standards as measured by Wisconsin Forward, would it just be best for our board reporting to just use Wisconsin Forward, which allows our teachers and our schools to continue to live in some hypothesis that would do all the things we need to do on a daily basis in supporting students? And using that data really wisely, interpreting really wisely, that we believe that it will correlate on the forward assessment, and that any measure of proficiency using STAR, because it is so tied to math that leads us to the forward assessment, it would be best just to live in conversation around the forward assessment. And so, when we look back at our results policy 2.1, and the instruction that we're giving, and the focus around appropriately challenging levels and teaching grade level standards, we know that the forward assessment is designed to gauge how well students are doing and relative, relative to those grade level standards. And so, kind of where we landed then is the idea of, all the things we're doing, we want that to be correlated of success on the ACT and the doors that that might open first. Pre-ACT, which is predictive of ACT, or forward math and forward reading assessment, which is predictive of those things. And then whatever assessment that the state rules out for at 20 around early literacy rates. We don't know what that holds for yet. And if those are the things that we are being judged on at the state, that those might make for the best board metrics in looking at how well we're examining the student proficiency around grade level standards. We will see STAR reading Spanish risk on there. We don't feel it would be right to not have an assessment that measures in our DPP program, in particular STAR reading Spanish. And there is not enough of a dataset yet that Wisconsin has been able to collect like they have for STAR reading English and STAR math, to make that correlated connection with proficiency on the forward. And so, to use that would be to continue along with using that as a risk, a risk measure.
Adam, maybe I misunderstood, or misheard. You said, well, I thought you said, the STAR testing itself will help with your opportunity gaps? Is that?
In looking at, when we start to disaggregate that data, and see patterns and trends, and students who are at risk, very much at risk, somewhat at risk, proficient, advanced, it starts to show some things in our system, the leadership moves that we've spoken to at board meetings about things we need to change in our construction, in our support systems, and make sure that we are closing gaps. Got you. Knowing how predictive that is of, you know, future opportunities in, you know, what doing well in some of these assessments is going to mean for student outcomes. That's cool. Go ahead, Adam.
Thank you.
STAR is really meant to be used within the PLC, right? When Dr. Clarity talks about the leadership moves, having PLCs, be able to dig into their student data like STAR, and see, here's where students are, here's where we can adjust our instruction to really maintain form of those instructional moves, which helps us better understand where students are and what we can do to support that constructionally within our systems of support. Close those gaps and mitigate for any early warning of a student who might not be on the path that they need to, and allow us to intervene in a proactive way.
Well, I'm glad you made me read a couple of slides because it brought a lot of clarity. I think the important thing of at risk does not, not at risk does not equal proficient is super important. I was trying to math my way out of that, and it's because my definitions were incorrect. I do want to clarify, on slide 12 at the bottom, the healthy school system should aim for 70 to 80% of students being at low risk. So, from my understanding of your slide, and I think the points above, the average is 60% of students are at low risk because 40% are, 40% are proficient and then 20% are average but not proficient? So are we saying as a school district, we're aiming above average and saying we want 70 to 80% of our students to be at low risk?
That's where we get into some of the tricky, the tricky math. In essence, the idea of that is yes.
Okay.
That there is a correlation between a risk, and that's some of the amazing math that STAR has done with some of these different state assessments that the, again, the percentage, the percentile rank you would need to meet to be at, at low, or sorry, yeah, to be at low risk is a lower bar than the one to be at proficient.
Right.
Yeah.
And I would add to that, even on the slide before, where it speaks of the average district with typical performance, you would expect to see 40% of scoring proficient. And so, I really want to dig into that statement because we, here's what we know and our board within billing of their mission has positioned our district to pursue, is that at average typical performance, a student is not going to thrive in a diverse global society. So that is not the,
It's very low.
That's not the, so, that is, and we also know that the investments that our community have placed in, in education, the expectations of high quality education and the human right for a world-class education really rely on us having a standard that is above, you know, an average nationwide. So I didn't want to look at, well, we will set the bar at 40. That's not what we are looking to do. But we wanted to give the actual data of what school system, public school systems across our nation, this is the average of where it sits, and that'll help us if the board, if we decided to go in that direction, help us look at what is our norm that we want to set. So we can begin to set clear metrics and then report those metrics to you.
So, I'm sorry, Jen.
No, go ahead, John.
I was just going to ask, I'm not sure I'm fully understanding kind of what the difference is between STAR and Wisconsin Forward from a standpoint of if we're sitting here a year from now at the table, looking at results, how are the results we're looking at be different?
We would be looking at, the leadership moves conversation would be the same.
Okay.
In a way, moving to something that just would better attend to those leadership moves and the kind of implementation outcome metrics we're using at the school level to lead to what we're seeing on onboard. I guess the task that it would be for the board is informing our academic services team, you know, and what is the bar that we want to set? And there is some information that we have to hope kind of get to that. And the question really revolves around who are we comparing ourselves to? Are we comparing ourselves to us? Are we comparing ourselves to the state? Are we comparing themselves to Lake Districts? Are we comparing ourselves to Dane County? And all of those lead to some different data that can use, we can use to help set, what is the bar we want to meet to show the health of our education and our students?
In general, also, a predictive question that I think the board would ask in this situation, if you look at STAR, could I, could we honestly say that STAR proficiency, as we were reading it, meant that my child was at grade level in performance? And we could not say that? Forward gives us a better, because it is the direct alignment, that proficiency there meets, yes, grade level.
Okay.
Yeah.
I get that.
Yeah. Without changing the structure, and that's very, I mean, we all know the problematic nature, you know, of state testing. However, again, it leads back to the hypothesis that if we're doing all the right things, it is also going to show.
So, setting aside the question of what the exact benchmark is, because that's a whole different conversation, is the potential metric we're talking about is, you know, we're going to achieve X% of proficiency as measured by Wisconsin. Correct.
The other benefit that we would have with Forward is Forward does also measure science and social studies as opposed to grade levels. Currently, STAR does not do that. So if you want grade level standards in science and social studies, that happens at fourth and eighth, and tenth, the social studies.
And I also want to be clear, in all these scenarios, STAR is still our interim assessment. No, that is not.
We see that STAR is still our.
Interim assessment.
It's so interesting to have, of course, the background of having been on the side of using STAR, right, and seeing this perspective differently of how many times as a classroom teacher, it was like, Forward tells me nothing. You know, I get the results, like after my students are gone, it's the next school year, and all of these things as to why from that perspective, it's so potentially unhelpful. And then coming to this perspective and seeing the power of what that information shares, but I appreciate how when I think I'm hearing you say is, the beginnings of our results reports where there's all the descriptors and the analysis of what has been happening as leadership moves, what you're seeing at the classroom level. So getting kind of anecdotally information about STAR through that organic process, but yet the measurement, what we put in results policies would be, would be Forward. So I still appreciate knowing those things and I think the transparency for the community, the ongoing dialogue about how that STAR assessment is used, I think is still worth capturing in this space, but that we separate the dialogue and the background and we hone in on Forward as the benchmark that we as this entity use as a measure. Um, and then just one other anecdotal piece that I'm thinking kind of in connection of what I'm hearing you say is we want to strive to really help our students achieve. And so are we willing to make those leaps in naming results policies that then perhaps have us not meeting expectations? Because we have that dialogue a lot, you know, how much we appreciate all of you and the work that the team does and how does that feel to come to this table then and say, you're not meeting expectations, but that's because we want to set these benchmarks high because of what we want for student outcomes. So I think that will also be an interesting way of framing just how the cycle of that process works.
I think it is, just to add to that maybe, and I appreciate bringing up the STAR piece of like, we're not robbing educators of maybe a more insightful exam just for our benefit. Um, I think in future indicators, it would be nice, or maybe in future presentations too, I think we started doing this, if we do set our benchmarks high as like the Verona Harry School District expects higher than forty percent of our students to be proficient, um, to still come and say, you know, remind us every time, here's the national benchmark, right? So we understand like, okay, we're not at the ASD excellence yet, but we are tracking pretty well to the, you know, national averages or what might be.
Definitely not changing anything. We've worked really hard to build transparency with families, send out STAR reports, bring PLCs together and cycles inquiry, use this data in a really meaningful way. So we don't want to disrupt any of those internal systems that we're collaborating around. This is simply about, that's as a classroom teacher, the Forward doesn't tell you what to teach differently, it all comes way too late in the year, it's not adjusting your next unit. As a result of it, what it can tell us though is here were the state standards, here's how our students are doing on those state standards. I want like, you need to think about in terms of board reporting to tell us about the health of our system.
Yeah.
Not individual student instructional adjustment.
Yeah, I think it's super helpful to split it to amazing, because STAR is predictive. Well, how can we use that to get in, to get the proper resources? Forward's the actual results at the end, which is kind of what we care about, but we also care about the process, to understand the process. Um, also, obviously, at the end goals, you probably want all kids, I'm gonna say a hundred percent proficiency is like that ideal.
Right.
Utopia.
Yeah.
Right? But obviously you don't get there overnight in a year, in two years. How do you split up a, an aggressive goal that we might set in the future with reasonable milestones that we might expect to achieve over a year or two to three year or five year basis? Because that to me would be much more impactful, knowing that this doesn't happen overnight. But we take a large goal, break it down into chunks and then make that metric and come back to the board and say, hey, when we get the progress we want, that'll eventually get us to this area.
Yeah, and that's the next layer of the, that's the next layer of the conversation once we understood that this is the, the agreed upon direction.
Yeah.
So now how do we think about what that benchmark number is? How do we think about what is appropriate growth from, from one, from one year in other words? Um, what are the metrics of, you know, as Adam mentioned, our, our Dane County peers, our, our statewide peers and then, and then national peers? Let's look at all that data and make determination of what does this mean based off our mission statement that I, we expect this much that will allow our students to, you know, to, to thrive in a diverse global society and just go right back to our mission statement every single time.
Thank you. I think it's really good that everybody's so into this, um, because for me, it's really hard not to go a million miles an hour and like get way out ahead. Let me just do that a little bit so that calm down a little bit over here. Uh, for me, this sort of like figuring out what the benchmark is and, and setting an appropriate standard for ourselves is like one very small part of the value of the process around like how things are doing. Like I think when I go into a student conference or parent teacher conference with my kids and they say, oh, your student's reading at this level, is their STAR data or whatever, like I want that, that's great, but also like what kind of person are they in class? You know, are they enjoying learning? Those are the things that really help me out. And, and so for me in this conversation, like, yeah, this is all great, but like I want to get to the point where we're asking qualitative questions around our students, like we're gonna talk about them becoming lifelong learners. Some of what we have to ask, like what does that mean? Like, do they enjoy learning? You know, uh, how do we think about that? You know, if I, if I want to sit here, you know, with all the Forward data or STAR data or whatever data I have, if I want to sit here and say, hey, how can I know that our first graders on average across the district went from point A to point B over their first grade year or their fifth grade or whatever I look at? How can we ask that question? Like, you know, like part of it is, yeah, we can measure progress on Forward, we can measure it through STAR, but you know, some of that is reactive to the environment around it, some of that is, you know, what are we doing? And so the closer, I like this conversation because it seems to be one small step closer to our metrics match what we're doing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but you know, I want to keep going with that and keep getting a little bit more into it. Uh, that being said, my one kind of serious question is, you know, is this gonna require more testing or assessment time?
Zero. This, this is embedded, this builds off of what we are already doing.
Correct.
In a more authentic way.
Okay.
And it's actually a wonderful.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yes, it's actually a wonderful segue to the next couple of slides, which I think attend to that.
Correct. Yeah, and, and first John, thanks for that, that broader picture as we get to metric number three, that's where you begin to see more of the mixed, mixed methods of what it means to look at it from the assessment point and, and the whole child. Uh, and so it's, we're gonna go growth next and then metric three, which would be the VASD mission metric, which it doesn't roll off the tongue, but it's gonna sound cool.
So in having this discussion, um, you know, real life, there's no way to tease out to take over this from this for a couple of reasons. One, um, when we think about a student who may be well above grade level, we are just as responsible for moving that student and without attending to some growth metric. We can take a student who's growing at the ninety-nine percentile, they dropped at the sixty-six percentile, the test still says that they are proficient, have we really served that student? Conversely, student may have been at the third percentile, they jump in one year to the twenty-seventh percentile. That's amazing growth. There are things we need to learn from that student's experience, but they're not proficient yet. And so that would get lost in all of that data. It is, it is a nuance we need to make to our system. And so when we look at, um, our, our data system that we'll be leaning into next year, Amy has snipped here, one of the things that that system will allow us to look at, and that is things like quadrant charts of who are the students we're looking at and we look at some of the quantitative measures that are below proficiency and have not shown growth. Who are the students in our system who are above proficiency who have showed high growth? We want all of our students to be in that top right quadrant. And once again, when we look at growth metrics, we, we live in a possibility of actually using STAR data to set that pathway of actually the student, you know, they're first grade now, well, by the time they're eighth grade, they would need to score this to be proficient and let's back that up. Spring, winter, fall, spring, winter, fall, spring, winter, fall, well, they would seven points grow every time and beat that. Once again, we come to a tricky math equation. Student enters our system in seventh grade, what should the metric be for them? A student, um, you know, is, has a specific learning disability in a league. Is that the best measure to measure their learning when they have an IEP that is guiding the goals, moving forward? And what we came back to is SGP, student growth percentile, is a measure that is comparing any student to their peers with that same score across the entire country, um, and what would be an expected level of growth that students with that same score profile would make between testing administrations in a way that controls for some of those things. Back to the hypothesis that if we have students who have a high SGP, we have to trust that those students are moving closer and closer and closer proficiency. They are moving out of a high level of risk, more ready to access grade level standards in a way that is, again, if it controls for any learner and gives the best information for us at the school level in looking at our instructional programming, particular intervention systems are meeting the needs of our learners. And once again, we're not getting into the numerical aspect of that, we would need to set a similar benchmark of what would be the percentage of our students that we feel should be meeting typical or high growth. We get to set that number level, STAR provides recommendations for that, that's what we've been using, but we can increase that and set it up in our data system in a way that reports, um, reports with that.
I think gross is, growth is a really impactful measure for learners themselves. Um, right? I think it can be really motivating for students that maybe also get hung up on, I'm not proficient and how to internalize data, but to help them also recognize that growth is hugely important. Um, so I just, and, and there was something you just said too, that really echoed the concept I know we've all kind of thought about is to not make anything that happens in this space, um, just muddy or add complexity or more work to what you're doing at the school classroom level every day. And so I feel like this is a, a nice funnel that we're just looking at how to take what's happening and bring it to this space. Um, so I forget how you said that, but I appreciate that again, how we bring this forward to this space. It's not to do anything different, it's not to adjust systems that are already here. But yeah, I think growth is highly, highly impactful, important information.
Um, I think, I, I agree, and I think while, I think this recognizes too, when we, when we say every student must be successful, for some students, like I don't know that it's totally realistic for us to say that the ideal is a hundred percent proficient because we have kids with IP's that might be on a different scale and success for them doesn't require them to be proficient in every certain area, but it sure does require them to feel good about their growths and their achievements and their successes, which I love this chart. Um, I think the other cool thing, and I, I would be interested to understand, I think, like leadership moves and strategy are really interesting to look at through this lens. Like when I worked in IT, we would do the same thing, right? Like what is the best value and the lowest amount of work? And it was like, well, do math stuff first. Um, and then what was low value and the most amount of work? Maybe ignore that. And while we would never ignore one of these quadrants, the plan of attack is so different. And so I think this would also be cool to be able to like look at this growth chart and say, here's the trend, right? We have, um, kids who are at proficiency, at or above proficiency, or have started not growing, and that number is up from last year. So what are we doing to support those students? Um, and to your point, what did we do last year to help kids make leaps and bounds in growth even though they're below proficiency? Um, so I think that would also be cool to see it in this representation of leadership moves or, or key changes, because I think it gives more ownership to that.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of really great connections here to student agency, right? Through our strategic framework, through journey of a lifelong learner, where we talk about goal setting with students and helping them think about where they are and how they can have a role in this, right? And how we help them to track their progress and build their efficacy along the way with, with their growth data throughout those three points throughout the year to really measure what that looks like. And yes, these quadrant charts are great for feeling is diving in to look at the data and really think about what are we doing for students in each of the quadrants? And do we have the right supports in place?
So I'm gonna turn it back over to Amy. And, you know, we focus a lot in R two one, R two two, R two three, R two four, on the academic piece and are really excited to lean into something that we feel better represents all our students bring with them, not just their academic selves, as a measure of the interconnectedness of all of these things when we look at the health of our education.
So to your point, John, we tried to begin thinking about the VASD mission metric, recognizing that many of our indicators are specific to one aspect of a student's experience. How many students have, or how many instances of physical aggression occurred? How many students are proficient on the STAR exam, right? How many students are enrolled in CTE classes, right? It's one aspect of their experience. And yet when we look at our mission, R one, it's really holistic about what is the totality of the student experience to make sure that our students can truly thrive in a diverse global society and how we're preparing them for them. And so when we tried to build this metric, we thought about what is a measure that could help us think about how many students holistically are meeting multiple benchmarks? Because we also believe they're very interconnected. If student's attendance is low, what does that mean for their sense of belonging, right? And how do all of those pieces work together? So again, just, just our initial brainstorm, thinking about what might possible benchmarks or criteria be that we would want to include in the VASD mission metric to get a sense of how many students are meeting each of these. So to start with, we just named attendance, students who are zero to one referrals, STAR proficiency for math and literacy, and then we named social emotional wellness. This could be a question on the climate survey, do students feel like that they belong? To your question for, do students enjoy learning, right? Do students see themselves as a learner? So that could be a survey or a more qualitative student voice metric that we could capture to include within this data set. Uh, a picture of what that might look like, and again, these numbers are solely an example or a mock-up, so I know that it's not perfect, but wanting you to get a sense of what it could look like. So really what you're seeing on the left then is a bit of a pie chart of how many students, if these were our metrics on the right, how many students were meeting two of those? How many were meeting three of those? How many were not meeting any of those? And then you also see the bubbles next to each metric of how many eighty point three percent in this example are meeting our attendance, et cetera, right? How does that correlate with what's happening with students meeting behavior expectations, et cetera? So this would be a brand new type of metric for us to consider, but that is meant to be more holistic to capture and kind of quantify, like the quantitative and the qualitative piece, allowing some student voice. Again, we could change these criteria if we wanted, but the idea is how can we better understand the holistic nature of a student's experience in VASD, specific to the commitment that we've made to them through our, through our mission statement, instead of the isolated proficiency, growth, referrals, attendance, right? In the isolated data sets, but to understand our students in more, more holistic ways. One more time.
So I want to ask a question about bias. Um, I'm sure you guys have thought about this a lot because the Forward exam, as much as they study it and go through it, EPI, is not without bias. Um, and I, um, when I see systems like this, I, I love it, it's exactly what I was talking about, but I want to talk about how you think about controlling for, um, the exponential multiplication of bias? Because each one of those may be related to another one in a way that reinforces a bias inherent in those measures. And I think about this in terms like when we were looking at indicators over the past year and we kept seeing students, um, the way we break it out is on pre-reduced lunch, students on pre-reduced lunch who, um, are maybe poor, whatever, that classifications, but that's what we can look at in the school district, that's the one metric we have for economic standing, would regularly fall short on a lot of these. Uh, and that would reinforce to basically scream at us, but it also kind of sets that up, that category for failing a little bit. Uh, so, you know, I just wanted to kind of bring that up. Like I said, I'm sure you guys are talking about it a bunch. And then thinking about like when we look at this criteria, how do we not only pick things like the Forward exam where they put a lot of effort into controlling against bias, but then how do we control ourselves against bias when the students are compounded together?
Yeah. So John, I appreciate that you looked at the bias and it's, it's kind of been a hard run of our, our conversations, so as you can anticipate with our team. Well, we, we also came to a deep understanding that, that our, the way that we look at data informs our bias training and the bias work that we do with our, with our, with our staff and among, among one another. The absence of these data where we, we see disproportionals in behavior referrals or disproportionals in, in, in attendance, we, without that data set, we aren't able to attack, dismantle our own system or actually attack our own system and say, why are these happening? It's not that we don't have, we don't have, uh, misbehaving students in our system based on race, we have issues that are causing, that are causing misbehaviors and, and race seems to be an indicator right now that we have to, we have to look at it differently. So I, I do, I do hear you in the, in reporting, we have to make sure that we don't allow bias to burn, but if we don't go there, then we can't look school by school, spot by spot student by student to make sure that, you know, that, um, that bias is not informing how we're actually, uh, delivering instruction and how we're looking at behavior issues.
Yeah, my like neat trick reaction would be like, man, I'd really like to see something in there about, uh, how many, you know, school groups somebody interacts with or involves themselves with, but then I immediately started thinking like, that's hugely problematic. Um, so like I said, I'm sure you guys have been through a lot of that, um, but yeah.
Okay, well, there's almost a backwards way. I mean, we talked about in our, um, you know, extracurricular discussions when we're talking, like this would be an interesting, um, when we're evaluating those, how does that also compare then to some of these other metrics? Does that help? Because I think we've talked about the people that are involved in, I, I can't think of the same thing right now, of course, but like just.
Drama.
Thank you. Thank you for the words. Yes, like if you're involved in drama, are you, you know, attending more frequently? Are you more proficient in math and reading? How do these other things start to play in? So I wouldn't necessarily put this in a metric, I would use kind of the other way.
Or then to see the potential barriers too, right? To, I think that using the data to discover the barriers, not using it to, right, exacerbate, but to discover and figure out where we need to push it.
So do we imagine this slide, because that's where my mind jumped too, like it would be helpful then to say, but this previously marginalized group doesn't engage in extracurriculars as much as our general base of students, is that because, uh, they don't have transportation, right? They're being bused from the truck and they don't have, like thinking about my own neighborhood, they don't have transportation and reliability to stay after hours or something like that. Um, and so I think that leads to build off of that, do we also see this mission metric being able to be shown for different focus groups like we have indicators today? Because I think that kind of gets at what John was identifying and, and what we're kind of chatting through here of like, being able to break that out and saying, do we identify?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And I should think, I appreciate in the conversations, both proficiency and growth, not wanting to create systems that were cumbersome and disrupted something for schools. I think actually in the conversation around this, we recognize this could actually be really beneficial for our teams to be able to dig into, to look at this. We click on the pie chart, it brings up a list of student names, who are the students who met two or four, and then digging to understand what are the barriers, how do we dismantle them, how do we plan for them? How do we understand the overall health of our students, not in solely isolated metrics?
And their overall school experience, right? That I, that I think that would be so informative as a classroom teacher, that I'm going beyond the academics and I'm really looking at students holistic experience too. And maybe gaining more information that helps me as that particular subject area classroom teacher, knowing kind of the whole child through more measurable data.
As a math teacher, right, the student could be proficient, doing really well in math and you don't realize some of these other areas are reasons students struggle. And then how can we help them solve that?
Which I think anecdotally, there's always been that, but I, I would envision then this being more tangible for our classroom teachers, for our staff to be able to wrap around versus having kind of those casual conversations of I wonder about, or what have you heard, which are all super valuable, but I think this gives a little bit more concrete information.
I'm very intrigued by this.
Yeah.
This metric, I think it's very interesting.
I love this. I think this is just a really interesting way to use the data that we're getting both in tracking these separate.
both in tracking these separate areas, but then also having the different combinations of them and kind of treats each of these metrics that's on here equally. I'm wondering if you could comment on, and I understand the metrics that are in here are just kind of proposals for now. And definitely the benchmarks are a conversation for later. But comment on the thought of putting in the STAR reading in math, when we kind of just a couple minutes before had a conversation about how maybe that's not the most useful data point. And also about how we talked about growth, that growth isn't reflected here. Would it be better to, instead of having STAR, have basically the first two metrics in there? As, and that in this metric are treated on par with the others that we?
And you're absolutely right. We can, we can fill this however we want. And I think it comes down to our decision, the key decision of, you know, using this in a predictive way. And if all of these things are aligned, what we need to do, believing that one is going to possibly affect the other, this becomes a really powerful predictive metric. If we're looking at it more of an outcome metric, then yes, we could shift and move, you know, Wisconsin Forward Assessment, you know, in here and see the correlation in those outcomes. Either of those has tremendous value. And back to the conversation on bias and all of this, how we use it? And our situation is in positions of power to a young people's lives and being responsible with what we're doing with that power. What we do with it is where we're going to be the biggest impact.
So just following up on that, I assume when I saw a STAR, that those referred to the student growth percentile aspects of STAR in this?
In this example, we've named proficiency here. Again, this could be how a team, like a school team, is looking at how many of our students are predicted to be proficient. If we wanted to have, point to shift this down from metrics, we certainly could change those to forward. We could change it to percent of students meeting typical or high growth. So we could play around with what those criteria need to look like and how that would best align with what we're trying to measure.
I also wonder, and this is just purely a question for future thought, I wonder if in a system like this, it's better to use something that's more like the STAR test where there's like a red light, yellow light, green light sort of band? Because to me, looking at these sorts of indicators and setting it hard and fast, like 75% attendance, you're either in or you're out. You're either morning ass or you're not morning ass. You know, you almost, or you have like a sliding scale instead of like a red light, green light, you have a sliding scale of one through five, and then you add up all the scores. And so, you know, so I don't want to upset the other stories out there. It's like, this brings back something, but I think we struggled with this board. But when you set that one number, that's an absolute cutoff, well, there are students that are just above that number that maybe struggle. And there are students just below that number that maybe had a bad day. And so you, I wondered, in this instance, not in the other ones where I kind of liked that, right? But in this instance, bands are more useful.
Yeah, so one of the things that we're looking at in presentation form, if this is a direction of choice, is look at it like more like a report card model that would have kind of the green, yellow, red, and I'm not big on red because, well, we'll figure that out. But the, I do think we have to come to a final decision at some point, but not tonight, it's not what tonight's for, on predictive, a predictive model or an outcome based model? And which one tells a, the better story for the board?
And like we were talking about, just STAR compared to forward, that are, at the classroom level, predictive feels very valuable. At the board table, outcome maybe feels more valuable, that it's not, right? That we hear the stories of the predictive analyses that happen through maybe something like this mission metric in the more organic sense, but we, again, for the results policies are leaning into more outcome.
I just want to, I think everything as presented is great for stuff.
Huge.
Yeah, we all want to just keep going in this direction.
And remember, the beauty of this system is regardless of what we, what the board would like us to bring forward, all of these ideas are things that can be set up at the school level, the district level, in our system to do exactly, it can be an and with all of these.
Adam, so that's what I'm wondering, I mean, because I know so very much about data collection, nothing. But I mean, is this something that where you can toggle, you know, the different, you know, the different values that you want to see? So let's say we want to make it a predictive model at first. Are you able to then later toggle some of the, instead of the STAR reading proficiencies, toggle to the forward and still have a collection of all of that data? I mean, there's just a lot of potential with something like this that I think is very, very interesting. And then how that applies, I think, especially if it can be a predictive, and then we can also then compare, I think we're starting to see where the strong correlations are. I think it's really cool.
Yeah, in summary, that kind of those are the three metrics we want to talk through tonight, from proficiency to growth and then to roll out this idea of the VASD mission metric. So thank you for your questions that allow us to hone what we're working through here and helps to give directions that you can come back and make sure. Again, the indicators representing our results policies truly are telling you what it is that we want to know about the leadership moves and their impact on students and all that.
So in the last, kind of the last question, I guess I have, I think this would obviously then impact our reporting schedule if we're pulling in forward data, because we don't want to be using backwards data. We want to be catching it as it's fresh. And, but I also want to make sure that at the board level, we're kind of seeing the STAR data too. How, I?
We're getting leadership updates, right, in presentation about kind of where, like where things are, finger on the pulse kind of things during the course of the year, but then where do the results policies?
Yes, I think our results structure sets it up so it's a one year, here's the information. But yet, we're doing that throughout the year. However, I'm not sure, I mean, I think part of it's, the board hasn't structured.
I think similarly to what we modeled at our last board meeting, where we just present the winter data as part of that, those are, those will continue. Where we look at, we have the ability to go fall, winter, spring data. So you have a pulse of the STAR data, kind of see the trends, we're able to talk about it, look at, disaggregate it among our focus groups. And for that, bigger monitoring report of this is the one that's, are we, are leadership moves working or not? Be able to provide that on a calendar date to be determined.
And we add that to our monitoring report schedule of like a post update or like a? Yeah, just so that it's clear, like, I'm guessing the STAR data roughly comes out at the same time each year of the spring, fall, winter data. So that would be cool just to kind of add, just so people, I'm sure you guys don't forget, but I'm like things to remember.
So January ends.
And we're going to be discussing the how later. Okay, I'll leave it alone. All of my, everything I'm thinking is centered on the how.
Yeah, and then this, getting clarity in this is going to be important. It's like Dr. Clarity said, there's all sorts of interesting next conversations that need to come from this, but I wanted to make sure we were moving down the right path to come back.
And I say that because talking with a lot of students last week, one thing I think about when we talk about qualitative data is that need for that safe space for students to be vulnerable enough, to bring their authentic selves, to answer the questions that we want authentically. And not just anybody can do that. And so I think about how do we go about that? How do we get what we're looking for? How do we get those answers? But that's a later conversation, it sounds like. Just as a note, because I see you writing, I would, I would semantically, and this is one of my little word things, if we're getting updates, I don't know that I would want those tied to the report. Just getting like academic update is good enough for me. Because if we decided that's a different direction for metrics than the STAR data, the board doesn't have the ownership over that. And so I don't want to necessarily see those.
But just to calendar it.
Yeah, that's just what our calendars are.
The way it's put out, I'm intending public right now, but just title it differently. Because it's not our monitoring report.
I really appreciate just the vision that's going into this, because I think this is, this is a very different way than we have been used to seeing data at all. And I think just even the creation of this different type of data really captures the mission that we, we, you know, put into policy and have had really, haven't been able to figure out how we want to capture. And you've really captured, I think, exactly what our thoughts have been. And I think the fine tuning is a process, but I think this is really, really creative and really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's exciting. I like the VASD mission metric. I think it does roll off. The mission metric, I like it.
I like the name of it.
Yeah.
It doesn't roll, but it is.
We can get rid of VASD. We know that it's, you know, it's ours. Well, I did not doubt that, but I still.
All right. There is no natural segue between data and employee insurance updates. So we're just going to go from data to an employee insurance update. Thank you, Rochelle. And Jack, you take the seat.
Good evening, everyone. I know this is a fun and exciting topic, but it's summer. I'm going to give you an update on health insurance and what it's looking like this year and what it's going to roll into for next year. So to ground ourselves, we have a really comprehensive insurance plan here for all of our employees. It includes health insurance through Group Health Cooperative, dental insurance and vision insurance through Delta Dental of Wisconsin, life insurance and disability insurance through the standard, long-term care and the principal standard. This is on top of all of the other wonderful benefits that are included. But we're going to specifically talk about those insurance pieces. So you can see for our current state, between our GHC HMO and point of service plan designs for healthcare, we have almost 670 employees enrolled in our health insurance. You can see under our life insurance plan, all of our eligible employees are enrolled in that, 841. So if you think about the amount of employees enrolled in health insurance, comparable to everyone that is enrolled, the really high enrollment for our insurance plans. You will also see a high enrollment for dental insurance, at 719 employees. You can see here what our annual premiums are for this year. We are very mindful to ensure that we stay discreet, as I said, for this piece of the insurance plan, as well as our employee and employer contribution. With our health insurance plan, our employees pay 11% of the premium and the district picks up the other 89%. For this upcoming year, what we're stepping into is that our premiums are going to increase for our health insurance. We knew this stepping in and we budgeted for this already. So our HMO rate cap guarantee for this upcoming year is 6.9%. That's the max that GHC pays us. For the, for the service plan, it's 7.9%. And I'll go into that a little bit more farther into the presentation. What I want to call out here, long-term care at the bottom. Long-term care insurance is an insurance that is slowly going away. The market doesn't hold as many carriers anymore. And because it's such a small market of carriers and the costs are so high, rates are going up significantly. UNOM has proposed to us and has given us a long runway that they're going to be increasing our rates by at least 50%. The timeline hasn't been determined yet, because the way it works is that UNOM has to increase those rates for everyone in the state of Wisconsin and then they have to petition against the state of Wisconsin. So we know at some point, sooner rather than later, those rates are going to go up pretty significantly. The district pays for the basic plan for every employee. And employees that can buy and buy a plan. Now let's focus back on GHC. Our GHC history is a long history. We have an incredibly rich health insurance plan with a $20 copay for adults when they go in to see a doctor. They have a $100, $300 deductible, which folks will see if they have inpatient hospital stays or if they have lab work done. We have practically a no cost prescription drug program. Folks pay nothing for generics and $5 of the bill. And of course, every year, GHC has to make some minor plan design changes. So we will see those pushed through this upcoming year. We signed our first contract with GHC in 2016. It was a five-year contract. For a couple of those years after that, 2021 and 2122, we signed one-year contracts. And in 2223, we signed a three-year contract. That three-year contract is coming to an end at the following of this upcoming school year. When we look at that premium increase, the 6.7 and the 7.9, this really comes into play with what GHC calls their utilization. And the simplest way to put it is, for every dollar GHC collects in premiums, they expect 90 cents to be paid out in claims and 10% to be paid out in administrative costs, paying their employees a salary process fee. What you can see here is our speedometer. Easiest way to say it is we are running for our medical loss ratio. For every dollar we pay in claims, we're paying 93.5 cents to them. So we're not running as good as what GHC would hope that a school district book of business would be. But a 93% is amazing compared to many other districts. So we're going to call this a win. You will see our medical claims is a little higher, it's closer to that red line in comparison to what GHC would be looking for. But on the flip side, and this is amazing information, that our pharmacy clinics are running incredibly low, which shocks me a little bit, because we know pharmacy clinics can be very expensive. We have a very low copay. So we know that our GHC doctors and our insurance plan is doing what's right for members. So as we see this, and as we look at what we locked in for our rate cap guarantees and where we're running for our medical loss ratios, there's very little wiggle room for us to negotiate down a lower renewal this year. There have been some other things that have come into play in the last couple of months that the board needs to be aware of and the public needs to be aware of. The first thing that we need to just recognize is GHC had a data breach in the end of January. We don't know what that data breach entails at this point. But they notified us very quickly. They locked down their systems and they are continuing to investigate and research what happened. To date, they haven't told us if member information was released or not. And if something were to happen where they uncovered it, then we will be notified and we will have ongoing points to that. Separately, GHC mandated two mid-year changes effective March 1st. Those are mid-year contract changes, which are hard to accept and hard to work through. Because we expect, and the relationship that we have is that changes are only made at the beginning of every plan year, July 1st. But they still push forward and apply this to their entire book of business. They first said, every time a member reaches out to their doctor through my charge, and it takes the doctor more than five minutes to respond, that member is going to be charged $10. That was hard to take. And so we have been trying to communicate with our staff so that they understand that. Our response is, don't email your doctors anymore through my charge, call and make an appointment. Right? Because you don't know where that five-minute balance is going to come from. Secondly, they also started charging for no show appointments. And this makes a little more sense. There are members that critically miss their appointments, which then takes away from that block for someone else who wants to be seen. And so while they are sharing with us, GHC said the first miss is a warning, second miss is an assessment. They still haven't shared what that could be, it's just yet, as they're working through it. But those two changes just went into play just a couple of weeks ago. Finally, as we look forward to July 1st, for the last of three years in our contract with GHC that we signed, they are pushing forward a couple of other more significant changes. One of those changes is they are stating that for the ACA, GHC is interpreting the law to say that every member on the plan needs to have the same copay and that we cannot differentiate copays by age. Right now, we have a differentiated copay system. Our dependents have a $0 copay when they go to the doctor. We pay nothing. Our parents pay nothing when they take their kids. And adults have $20. And GHC is saying, we can't do that anymore. So GHC first said, we're raising everyone up to $20. And pushing back a little bit, I said, that's a pretty big cost increase for our members. Are you going to decrement us for that renewal? Are you going to take? Are you going to take that 6.9 and drop it down to something else? And they came back with the teeny-tiniest little adjustment that did not make sense. And so as a part of this March 1st rollout of their other fees, I was able to talk directly with their senior leadership and they lowered all of the copays to zero next year. So instead of having everyone at the $20, they have agreed to put everyone at zero and not increment rates. That's a short-term solution. I will say, that is not a long-term solution that we want to consider, but it is something that we know that it would have been a bigger impact for our families, raising a child copay up to $20 than an adult copay down. So as we look at our comparables for next year, you will see that our H M O office visit copay is now zero. That is significantly lower than every other district and our R X is significantly lower than every other district. That means we have a very rich plan in comparison to our other districts. Very good plan. One that we recognize and celebrate is the great work to do. Yet, I want to make sure that we are doing our best to make sure we have the best insurance plans for our staff. So as we end this three-year rate guarantee with G H C, we are going to step foot again into analyzing what the best plan options are for our employees. That's going to include administration and union presidents. That will include survey source staff. That will include feedback from our staff to really understand what meets Verona's needs and how we can also meet our employees' needs and do that in a financially stable way. And so throughout this upcoming year, we will be communicating with you what those updates are and how we progress forward to make sure we do what's best for our staff and for the budget for next year. But from right now, we need to approve health insurance for the 24, 25 fiscal year. That's not affordable for tonight. It will be one to do in an upcoming board meeting, but that isn't action that we will need from you to finish our three-year rate guarantee with G H C. Does anyone have any questions?
Not a question, but I can't resist commenting on how annoyed I am at the fee for MyChart messages. Because I think what that's going to end up, number one, that's like reversing the course of the trend of healthcare delivery right now. It's, it's pushing people towards in-office visits for simple primary care things that can be handled remotely, which is more expensive. And I think the reason they're doing it, combined with waiving the in-person copay, is to drive one business to make it seem like we're more expensive to work with care so they can charge us more premiums than they can. And that annoys me. But there's, there's no question.
My counterpoint to that is, as a self-employed person, married to a self-employed person, this makes me want to cry. We are very lucky to have employees that have such great benefits and I think that's fantastic. Not so much if you're self-employed.
Just a couple of points of clarity. The like little indicators that show, is that just for the last year?
That is from December through December. So that's a 12-month rolling.
And they actually look at that from a reading position? They don't go back over the lifetime of our?
They go back one year and they go back three years. And then they wait the third year, the second year, and this first year. And those waiting calculations then comes up with the plan renewal and what they offer.
If, before area things that are frustrating, I'm amazed that they can do this no-show appointment piece, which I agree makes sense, but not tell you what the fee is, even though it's already been enacted. That's fantastic.
It was really a blast. I, I will publicly say this, this was a lasting decision that was not communicated well. Even in the G H C member email that our, our members get from G H C, it's like the very last section and you have to click the link to click the Q and A to get to that information. I have expressed my opinion to G H C and how we strive to have open communication and we expect them to have open communication.
And I guess to build on that, I, I just want to share appreciation for what you're doing to try and help our employees navigate this because much like Meredith, we also have small businesses or work for startups and we purchase our own individual plans in my household. And it's been quite an eye-opening experience. And having G H C, we were also kind of like, what? I mean, just working in the medical space and understanding fee for service versus value-based care, the MyChart thing doesn't shock me at all, unfortunately. I think it's a bigger problem of a bigger ecosystem of insurance, but I could talk about that for forever and nobody wants, I'm sure Corby could also talk about it forever. No one else here that. So let me just say, I appreciate you shepherding our employees through this because I think it's so hard to understand and it's the one area of having my own company that I really miss being part of a bigger company, is having someone in H R or in benefits to be like, wait, what does this mean again? So thank you for doing, and, and the rest of the team that you're working with, thank you for doing that.
This is interesting. You know how we talk about like the data has a story? And I think I'm recalling correctly that historically over, you know, my years in the district, I think we've, we've typically run higher on the medical loss ratio, just historically. But yet, when you see that we're low on pharmacy, I can't help but wonder, what's the story behind that? Is it preventative care? You know, what is it actually dialed down to? But I understand they want to just see it as a numerical value, but it makes me really curious about just what that means for our employees and just understanding the story behind that versus just, here's the data point, therefore you're more expensive. Because I see some positives there too. And it's just unfortunate, right? When the number doesn't get to tell the story.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rochelle.
See that this is a lot?
All right. So that'll formally close the superintendent's report. Thank you for your time and great, great dialogue.
Thank you. I've lost the agenda somewhere in all of this. Do I have a written copy?
Board action.
Written copy, help please. I'm used to seeing it on my computer. Okay. So board action, do we have any board updates? Corby, I bet you do.
Yes.
Yes, I heard you've been out and about quite a bit.
Yes. Last week, last Wednesday, was the African-American History Academic Challenge here at the high school. The local round was last Wednesday and the regional round was last Friday. Meredith was one of our judges. Thank you. And happy to report the senior division, Verona, won. That's the second year in a row that Verona has won the senior division and gets to compete at the national level, the second week in June in Atlanta. The junior division, Hamilton Middle School, won for Madison. Also.
Corby didn't say that he was a fantastic emcee for events and did an amazing job. It was a very, very, very great event.
It was a lot of fun. The kids were amazing.
They were.
The two, the teams that won, all of them were amazing, but the teams that won, they, there were some shocking moments throughout the competition where they actually corrected the question that was being asked.
That's awesome. They had the judges, one of them being me, go back, check out the text to ensure that the answer that they gave, they gave such a nuanced answer. It was very impressive. Very impressive work by the students, truly.
And then this, this past Saturday, my fraternity, the greatest fraternity on the planet.
We've talked about this before.
The Omega Sci-Fi fraternity incorporated. Don't watch it.
We don't have so much time.
We, Dr. Clarity and the district so graciously let us use this very room for one of our mandated programs, the Talent Hunt Competition. And it's where we look for children, kids who are between grades nine through 12, and give them an opportunity to showcase their talent. Poetry, dance, art, rap, whatever the case may be, singing. And one of the winners, the runner-up, was actually a Verona student. She gave a spoken word that moved all of us. Tamara Stanley was one of our judges. She could attest, she really did her thing. Ayana Princeton is her name, senior here at Verona. Very moving, touching, spoken word. Yeah, lots going on last week. I should just make a room.
Thank you for your investment in all of that too. We really appreciate the work that you do to invest in our students. Thank you.
Yes. I just wanted to give a shout out to the high school facilities team and whoever was involved in doing the kids carnival. As a mom of little kids, I saw Mr. Zengchime there as well with our children afterwards, trying to convince them to eat tacos. Our whole table was disgusting. There was just like food everywhere. But it was really cool to see, it's always really cool to see the community in our school and in our spaces. I've got Clarity there and Joe was there as well. And so it was just really cool to have the community in the school and feel like this is very much a part of the city. So all of the student athletes that were there and different student groups, my daughter asked me what Dungeons and Dragons were after we visited the G H C carnival. So that was pretty exciting. So yeah, just wanted to give a kudos to the high school team.
Anything else?
On a later note, because we should all be aware of the impacts that we have and we can't control those impacts. I was going to pick out my kid late from a school activity and a bunch of kids were coming out, whole group of kids. And this one kid stops and he looks at me and says, you're that guy? Like, okay.
Yeah, well, might be.
He's like, you're that guy from the school board meeting? Yeah, he gets deadly serious, looks right in my eyes and I'm like, oh, yeah? What do we, what do we? He's like, you had that bowl of chips. For a time, you were just eating those chips. And I'm like, yeah? He just looked at me and walked.
You're showing optimism.
Appreciate it.
That's it. They were the chattering of our mouths.
Any additional board updates? On that note, yeah. Okay, so with that, we'll move on to public comment. Any public comments made? Hearing none. We can move on to superintendent consent agenda. So everyone had a chance to check it out. Hearing no questions or concerns, the superintendent consent agenda is approved as presented. We can take a look at the board consent agenda. Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, the board consent agenda is approved as presented. Looking ahead to future agenda items, our next meeting will be April 1st.
No bullin'. It's on April 1st, sorry. That was great. The Monday right after break, right?
Yeah, yeah. Representative Mike Derr may be joining us for a legislative update, so I think that's really fantastic. It'd be great to have our elected officials come in and, and talk to us about all the stuff going on at the state level. April 2nd, we have elections and then our meeting after that will be the 15th. Anything else going on? We do have a Sun Prairie Governance Workshop that is coming up May 15th, I believe. Let me check my calendar real quick. So we'll want to get a count of people that might be interested in attending that. I would highly recommend it. I believe it's the 15th and 16th? We'll circulate information about that, but just kind of something to get on your calendars because I know everything starts to go up before May. I think that's it as far as agenda items. So with that, we're going to adjourn to closed session under Wisconsin statute 19.85 sub 1 sub C to consider the employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility and Wisconsin 19.85 sub 1. So that to consider financial, medical, social or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except for paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public would likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations, specifically for the purpose of discussing the employment of a teacher, discussing and taking actions appropriate regarding the issuance of a preliminary notice of consideration of contract non-renewal under Wisconsin statute 118.22 to a teacher. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by John, is there a second? Second by Nicole, we'll do a roll call vote, starting with Joe.
Aye.
Corby?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Juan Carlos?
Aye.
I'm I as well. We are officially adjourned to closed session. Thank you, everyone. We'll take just a brief, a little bit of break, yeah.